Good afternoon. The time is now 1:03 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of April 10, 2018 is called to order. Marilyn, are there any individuals who wish to address the board at today's meeting?
There are. I have two forms. And so the first speaker is Linda Syprit Kilburn, and she will be followed by Ivy Bell and some of her colleagues.
Good afternoon. You guys enjoyed some of those sun rays out there today.
Good.
Bonjour et bienvenue. Je suis Annemarie Dushesnakas. Je condote mme. I work at Kalamazoo River in Donjiva, also known as Linda Syprit Kilburn. Just here to give you kind of an update of what's going on with the organization. We've been having really good feedback and support from teachers. We've been doing a few of the conferences and stuff, and I was really, really happy with the comments and support and literature that was taken by the teachers administrators. So that's going along really well right now. We also have a button campaign going on, so I left each one of you one of our buttons. We have several of them. So we're doing a lot of different things right now, trying to get more education out there, also talking with the senators and legislation and different things like that. I just spent all morning over there, so it's been going fairly well. The one thing, though, that I'm disheartened to report is, though, I tried to speak with Senator Kelly, and his office basically told me to go away. They're not even going to talk to me or even consider this bill. So I called my brother Dar up, who lives in Saginaw, and said, "Hey, you need to talk to your senator." And so he's been trying for a month to get a reply, and he can't even get a return phone call. So I think that's a sad fact, that when senators can't even take the time to at least have an office employee or somebody to get back with one of their own people about a matter that they're dealing with. So unfortunately, we have those kind of things, and still more education, obviously, even with our senators and stuff on this issue. So we'll just keep plugging ahead and doing the best that we can do. We also have been doing quite a few events. We've been doing a lot of things in Kalamazoo, been getting big support over in that area, and we're also now starting up trying to do educational things in the Detroit area. We've talked to Rees over there, and also we've been working with NAIA and several of the other Native American organizations over there to start forming committees and having them to start approaching their own public schools and talking to them. So hopefully, with all the work that's going on right now, we will end up with a good turnout, I hope. So other than that, there's not really a lot to report this month. We're just plugging away and just kind of want to give you guys an update. So thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ivy Bell, and she has two people with her. Ivy, if you'd be so kind as to introduce your friends, that would be awesome.
I'm Sabrina Boros.
I'm Kelly Osterink.
We are students at Ferris State University in the Masters of Social Work program, so we're currently in a political, a policy advocacy class, and so we would like to present some information for your guys' consideration. Thank you, of course, for letting us be here. We'll do our best to keep this brief. So as I'm sure you all know, human trafficking has become a disturbingly persistent problem, not only nationwide, but especially in our beloved state of Michigan. While we attract millions of tourists annually, this also increases the risk of trafficking. This issue is one that needs immediate and consistent attention. Although any individual, male or female, young or old, can be victimized by the perpetrators of this crime, it's no secret that adolescents and teenagers are faced an especially significant risk due to a variety of vulnerability factors. We believe the most effective way to address this issue is to take preventative measures. Far too often, the victims of human trafficking do not make contact with helping professionals until it is too late. Whether they are too afraid to come forward, trapped by their traffickers, or not taken seriously when they do speak out, or heaven forbid, no longer living to tell their truth, once these victims are in the hands of the individuals who treat them as property, it can be extremely difficult and nearly impossible to get them out of the trade. Even if they are rescued, they must then re-enter their lives with a slew of new traumas, mental health concerns, and other struggles related to re-acclimation. Even with extensive services, they may never be able to return to the person they once were before being trapped by those traffickers. This is why we have come up with a policy proposal that aims at the preventative side of the issue. We wish to tackle this problem head-on, giving those who are considered the most vulnerable a fighting chance against becoming victims in this cruel trade. In the policy we have created, we are advocating for mandated prevention education in all Michigan high schools. Carried out in an annual assembly format, the process would be facilitated by local human trafficking agencies across the state. Experts in the field would be brought in to provide a specified presentation that focuses on the dangers, warning signs, and preventative measures that can be taken by both students and faculty. Along with our proposal, we have included a budget outline and proposed timeline. We firmly believe that taking a preventative and proactive approach is the best solution to reduce victimization in human trafficking. Please consider this policy proposal as part of your plan to make the great state of Michigan a top-ten state in 10 years. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I believe that's the end of public participation.
The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is the Presentation on Standards for Preparation and Practice of School Psychologists. The standards for the preparation and practice of school psychologists were created using national standards for school psychologists. They support the top-10 and 10 strategic goal number three, which is to develop, support, and sustain a high-quality, prepared, and collaborative education workforce. The set of standards will replace the roles and competencies previously identified in administrative rules and will guide the preparation and practice of school psychologists. After today's introduction, there will be a period of public comment and a request for approval at the June State Board of Education meeting. Presenting today are Leah Breen and Alex Clark.
Hi, thank you. I'm Leah Breen, the Director of the Office of Educator Excellence.
And I'm Alex Clark.
Alex should be right back. He stepped out for a minute.
I'm Vanessa, in case anybody wasn't clear.
So we're here to introduce to you the Proposed School Psychologist Preparation Standards. These are intended to prepare school psychologists, candidates in colleges of education. The purpose of these standards is to establish a shared vision for knowledge and skills of entry-level psychologists and to guide our preparation programs around the development and the assessment and to support their accreditation practices. So why are we bringing these to you now? The standards that we have currently in place are 12 years old. That is because they were previously written into administrative rules. We, in the most recent rules revision process, removed them from the rules and now have to write them in as standards. And as such, standards come to you as the board. These standards respond to a shift in vexed practice in the field that has occurred over the last 12 years, and they are intended to also support the achievement of students in, as aligned to the top-10 and 10.
Okay, so you see the slide that shows a timeline of development, and hopefully it won't confuse you, but I'll talk about administrative rules as well as standards. So administrative rules were redrafted in 2016, and it was through this redraft process that we discovered that school psychologist competencies and roles were embedded in rules. And as you guys may know, rules don't change very frequently, and so we thought it necessary to remove the roles and competencies from rules and create some standalone state standards, much like we have for teacher preparation training and the administrator certification training. So those rules were drafted in 2016, and in the early part of 2017, we convened a committee to draft standards. And so the standards were created using P-12 practitioners and institutions of higher education, the individuals that have school psychology preparation programs. And so the committee drafted the standalone standards. Later in 2017, in November, we had the administrative rules for certification of school psychologists were passed, creating the pathway for these standalone standards. That's what brings us here today. So the State Board of Ed presentation today is the standalone School Psychologist Preparation and Practice Standards that we look to put to public comment and hope to receive consideration from the board. The standards are identified as domains of practice. There are 10. You'll see five listed on this slide and five on the next, starting with database decision-making and accountability. School psychologists use psychological and educational assessment, data collection strategies, and technology resources, and apply results to design, implement, and evaluate direct intervention, psychological services, and programs. The second standard is consultation and collaboration. School psychologists demonstrate skills to consult, collaborate, and communicate with individuals, families, schools, and communities. The third standard is intervention and instructional support to develop academic skills. School psychologists use assessment and data collection methods and implement and evaluate services that support cognitive and academic development. The fourth standard, intervention and mental health services to develop social and life skills. School psychologists use assessment and data collection methods and implement and evaluate services that support socialization, learning, and mental and behavior health. The fifth standard is school-wide practices that promote learning. School psychologists develop and implement practices and strategies to create and maintain effective and supportive learning environments. And on the next slide, you'll see standards six through 10, starting with preventative and response services. School psychologists promote services that enhance learning, mental and behavior health, safety, and physical well-being through protective and adaptive factors, and implement effective crisis prevention, response, and recovery. Number seven, family collaboration services. This is family-school collaboration services. School psychologists design, implement, and evaluate services that respond to culture and context and facilitate family and school partnerships and interactions with community agencies for enhancement of academic and social behavior outcomes. Standard number eight, diversity in development and learning. School psychologists provide professional services that promote effective functioning for individuals, families, and schools with diverse characteristics, cultures, and backgrounds, and across multiple contexts. Number nine, research and program evaluation. School psychologists evaluate and apply research as a foundation for service delivery and use various techniques and technology resources for data collection, measurement, and analysis to support effective practices at individual, group, and systems levels. And finally, number 10, legal, ethical, and professional practices. School psychologists provide services consistent with ethical, legal, and professional standards, engage in responsive, ethical, and professional decision-making, collaborate with other professionals, and apply professional work characteristics needed for effective practice as school psychologists. Some highlights of these new standards. So they're different from the roles and competencies that were in administrative rule before. There's a greater emphasis or focus on prevention and intervention, and this prevention and intervention exists at all levels, the district, the school, the classroom, small group, and individual student. Prevention and intervention is aimed to promote positive social, emotional, and academic outcomes, and there's an emphasis on curriculum-based approaches to academic assessment, CBA, instead of the traditional intelligence and achievement tests. Direct observation and recording of student performance within the curriculum used to make instructional decisions. There's some additional highlights on the next page. There's an emphasis on functional behavior assessment, to understand behavior and to identify the academic needs as well as the social, emotional needs of students. This is kind of identifying the why behind the behavior, and there is a move beyond the collection and using of data to determine special education eligibility. Standard 1.7 identifies assessment for the purpose of determining special education eligibility. That's one of eight sub-standards of 10 total standards, so it's just a small percentage of what school psychologists do in their service delivery. And then lastly, these standards are highlighted. They show a consideration for national standards. I'm sorry, I just realized that I didn't have my notes, and so...
Oh, that's important.
Thank you, Leah, for stepping in on those first couple of slides.
Yeah, no problem. So I think this information, for me, felt timely, based on what we've heard today, our earlier presentations and during public comment, and it was a great opportunity to bring them forward to you. What questions do you have?
Sorry. Cassandrae, let's see, I thought you were over there. Sorry. I have a couple. The last time I heard anything about a social worker ratio to student, it's, I'm sure, a school counselor, it's 721 to 1. I don't know if that's still accurate, but what's the ratio? My first question is, what's the ratio of school psychologists to students? And then the second question I have is really on that last slide, moving on collecting and using data, special education eligibility. In the past, I've been told that only outside evaluators can determine whether a child has something that qualifies for special education. And I think that was put in place to prevent teachers from deciding that a student couldn't learn without some sort of substantiation from the outside. But is there an effort within schools to refer children out if a psychologist or a school counselor believes that they need an evaluation? Is that what that means, or is there something else?
Well, the point of that is just to kind of dispel the old-school idea of what school psychology is and where students are just evaluated to label or determine their eligibility for special education. And the scope of school psychology is much broader than that and has to do with all the standards that are listed here. But as far as, back to your question about ratio, we don't have an established ratio in our standards. The national standards suggest that it's 1 to 500 or 1 to 700. They give a range as appropriate. But back to the question about, you know, students being referred outside of the school community to be evaluated. Michigan Special Education rules, MARS, designates who can be involved in determining eligibility for special education, and those, so, I mean, Roxanne Balfour or someone in her office could probably talk about that side of things. I don't know if there's a trend like you're talking about in schools where there's an effort, you know, to get outside evaluations. If they want outside evaluations, it's certainly within their rights and within administrative rule, MARS, where they designate the individuals that can provide those type of services. So it could be someone that's a credentialed school psychologist through our department. It could be someone with a clinical credential through Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. It could be a team of people that involves psychologists and other individuals.
I should say that I understood there was a firewall up from schools to prevent them from determining whether a child needed services that would come from IEP. I guess it's... So Michelle may have more information on that.
Well, and we can, I've never run into a school psychologist. That's why I asked what the ratio was.
Yeah. Like Alex said, can we get you a follow-up from our office of special ed?
Absolutely.
Because obviously eligibility is a very specific, we wouldn't want to speak...
I'm just curious as to what the changes are. You know, are we...
Right. So like Alex highlighted, this is to try to say the school psychologist role is broader than simply this. I think your question about how is eligibility determined and firewalls, we'll follow up with you from our office of special ed if that's okay.
Let me just, my experience is, that is the role of school psychologists. They can make those eligibility determinations, but I believe the parents have the right to have an independent valid if they disagree. So there's a check, but the school psychologists do spend a ton of time on special ed assessment.
And I say this only because I've never met a school psychologist with a child in a school, so...
I know, yeah. I know. I'll pay your help with that.
Richard?
I was curious, now, the 10 standards on page, I guess it's five and six on the slides, page three on the handout, these are the new standards, right?
They are, yeah. Richard, I don't know if you have the packet that has, they have the 10 standards, and then they're parsed out with sub-standards, but yeah, those are the standards.
Okay. The database decision-making accountability, what would be an example of a database decision that, I really have no idea what this is talking about.
Yeah, well, there, I mean, so there are eight subcomponents of that. If you look on page, I guess I don't know if I have the same handout that you guys have, but on page five...
They have access to it on their computers.
Okay. But database decision-making framework, so there, like I said, there are eight different subcomponents of that, but they use a problem-solving framework as a basis for their service delivery and practice. They use multiple sources and consider ecological factors in the context for all assessment and intervention decisions.
A great example of that one might be PBIS. So they're using their PBIS system to gather student data to help them make decisions about special education eligibility for students. That would be data-making decision, database decision.
So this is all in the area of special education, then?
Not necessarily. They are, you know, school psychologists would be a strong member of a child study team or a school support team or an MTSS team or a PBIS team. So they might help the school identify what are building-level trends in data that they're seeing that could be associated with student or teacher data in order to implement a school-level change as well.
Okay. Yeah, there are a lot of regular education students that get intervention, scheduled interventions to target certain behavior or academic challenges that haven't necessarily received any kind of special education label, and school psychologists are integral to that process.
Okay. I mean, grief counseling or something of that nature?
Pardon me?
Grief counseling or something of that nature?
Potentially. They're prepared to perform those services in addition to school counselors and social workers.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question. How many schools in the state have psychologists?
We can get you the exact number.
Not very many.
I don't know. I think many of them contract with ISD-level school psychologists rather than having on-staff their own dedicated school-level psychologists, but we can get you information kind of both ways.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, this will come back, this will go out for public comment and be back in June.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you make sure with the public comment, and I was hoping that I could get a copy of what the rules used to be and be able to, I think we can within our link that you sent us with this particular set of standards, but just so we have to copy the old rules too. And maybe people who are commenting publicly have access to it too.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Presentation on the Partnership District Model, an update. This is a monthly update on the partnership district model, including the newest partnership districts identified.
I think we're going to bounce to prep first.
That's what...
Or am I ahead on this off?
Nope, you're probably right.
That's what I just said. Yeah, sorry. I just said, Leah, we're not doing counseling. She's like, we're not. I'm like, not asking. Say it again.
We are now doing the Presentation on the School Counselor Professional Development Standards. This is in response to an amendment change to state law and in collaboration with the Office of Talent and Economic Development. The department recently convened stakeholders to draft professional development standards for the renewal of school counselor credentials. The professional learning must include at least 25 hours focused on college prep and selection, and at least 25 hours with a focus on career planning, including five clock hours of military career options. Today, these standards are presented to the board for review, and then it will go out to public comment. And we have Leah Breen, Krista Reed, and our deputy.
And Alex.
Alex.
And Alex.
Alex.
Okay, we'll jump right in. The School Counselor Professional Development Standards are slightly different than what you just discussed with the school psychologist. The school psychologist is the entire preparation program where you earn a school psychologist license or certificate. These are a subset of how you prepare school counselors, and it's after they've already received their certificate. It's expanding on their knowledge in a very specific area, so professional development specific to what the law really lays out for us. So 380, 1233 was amended, and it added language that essentially requires the stakeholder group development. We met with stakeholders and developed these standards that will meet the requirements of the law. The law required 25 college, 25 career, and five military embedded within that. And so we have a bit of a timeline in that it has to be approved by July 1, so that puts us on a bit of a tight schedule. The purpose of these standards were to really help shift the practices of school counselors and the field of school counseling to promote greater awareness on college, career, and military options to students. It fully supports the top-10 and 10 strategic goals as they're listed up there, and they really, they're really key to expanding the knowledge of what a school counselor already has been prepared to know and to do, but taking it to that next level. There's a lot of current and relevant words you'll see throughout the standards that help to tie it into what's going on today, because the job market, career, college, all of those things are different. They're different today, they'll be different six months from now, and as we go on. So these standards are to really help expand that knowledge that they already have in their preparation. Here's the timeline that we have to follow. The law was cast in November. We had our stakeholder groups and convened those, and we are here today presenting them to you so that we can take them out to public comment and then bring them back for approval at the next, at the June board meeting. So that's our timeline, and all of these will be implemented in 2020. So the deadline specified in the law is that you cannot renew your school counselor credential or certificate after February 6 of 2020 unless you've met the requirements of the law. We convened the stakeholder group, trying very specifically to meet all the requirements in the law, and the law did specify it had to have university admissions office, financial aid, business and industry, and we incorporated other relevant stakeholders to that work, especially superintendents, school administrators, and so forth. And the process really was, was taking a look at what we already have in place in our standards. We have school counselor standards for the preparation of those school counselors, just like the school psychologist ones, and we took parts of those. We have explored other organizations, other readiness models that are out there, and thankfully, there was a lot already prepared and already available at our fingertips that we could use to build these. The highlight of the new standards is that we have them broken down into two specific domains. The career and the college are the two specific domains, and then we intertwined the military options throughout. While the law specifically required it as a part of the career readiness piece, as we met with the stakeholder groups, one of the interesting things that I found was that there are definite ties to military for college, the financial aspects of college and the connections to military, I'm sure you can imagine. So there are pieces that we wanted to make sure were embedded throughout and not just in career, but also in college. There are 41 standards total, 17 specific to college, 24 related to career, and there were nine that were specifically addressing military. There were a lot that we could have just thrown the word military in and it would have covered it, but specific nine standards that we knew were very important and key to the military aspects. The basis of developing these, as I said, we had a lot of resources that were already out there and available. K-CREP, which is a major council for accrediting these school counselors, the programs, was a great resource, and you can find all of their information readily available on their website. These were the sources that we used, and they helped us to form all of the standards that the group then really went through and ironed out all the wrinkles, and we think we've provided a good set of standards for that. we've provided a good set of standards for that.
So, so next steps for these, as Krista mentioned, is that with the boards, after today, they'll go out for a public comment, we would bring them back for approval, and then, it's a little bit different, we actually have to develop a process for providers to be able to apply, demonstrate that they're meeting these standards in the program, and then offer them to school counselors, all in as hastily as possible so that these school counselors have them before 2020 in order to complete their 50 hours of professional learning.
And before I move to questions, I just, for the board, I want to apologize during agenda planning, I told you both of these standards were the same thing, and obviously you've heard from the presentation, they are not, so I blame Alex for that. So, if you're wondering, this doesn't match up with what Vanessa said, she was not as prepared, as she should have been, so I'm sorry.
Actually, I was only telling Cassandra that you were still sitting there. I looked as if you thought you were going to talk some more, so. Well, you know, I had an interesting conversation with Superintendent Seaberson after this morning's presentation. I don't know whether any of you heard the Muskegon presentation. And this is one of those things where I totally supported having school counselors be a bunch better trained in placement, post-secondary placement, but he said something really interesting. They've gone to a rather intensive school support model, and he was saying that a, an incident in any other schools could take a school counselor away from everything else for a day trying to get that resolved for a child, and that they recognized on the ISD level that they needed to be doing, supporting the career counselor function with counselors who roved. And I've heard this before, and he pointed out that the value, that while the school counselors know their students best, that they were finding that servicing the students for the kinds of conflicts that occur in school were more valuable in the school placement than having them also have to deal with job fairs and career fairs, and that they were supplementing it from the ISD level for people who are specialists in placements. And I want to make sure, as we move forward on this, that there isn't reason to have professional development, professional learning for school counselors who are onsite. That's substantially different from a designation that might be happening in the ISD starting to happen, because I know I've heard this in at least one other place, that they are doing career counseling from the ISD with the school counselor, but allocating special resources to it to make sure that it can happen because of the calls and demands on the school counselors. I would hate to prioritize, put all of our eggs in career counseling when the reality is that we need both career counseling and school services. Yes? Thoughts?
So, this was legislated. So this wasn't something that we, as a department, had a choice. Our role is to develop the best career and college and military standards available and align in order to implement.
Which you've done.
Thank you. That said, you know, I think we support all educators, including counselors, having flexibility around obtaining the professional learning that they need, based on either their placement, their IDPs, their evaluations, all of those things. College and career readiness is important. When this legislation was drafted, we were brought in as partners to help make it the best legislation that we could, and we were offered that opportunity. I have heard similar conversations about legislating other professional learning requirements, and I do have concerns that, about legislating all of it and leaving them little flexibility in what they need in order to best meet their needs, so.
I think, I think big picture too, it's 50 hours total over, how long does a certificate last? Five years?
Five years.
So you can spread your training out, and I think even if the ISD was doing all the career counseling, the idea would be a school counselor should still have general awareness of major developments in the career field. So I think, like you said, we wanted to be able to deliver high-quality professional learning, very much echo Leah's points about when we legislate, it has to be done a certain way, we take away the flexibility, but I think 50 over five is hopefully doable, especially if there's providers offering different ways of obtaining that, and we would want to reflect it at all levels of the system.
And one quick follow-up question, is this in addition to school counselor renewal training in their field?
Part of the 150. So 150 hours of professional learning is required to renew a certificate, and the 50 would be-
And the other 100 could be social studies, psychology.
Crisis management, or whatever they want, whatever their needs were.
Yeah, and that was one piece of feedback that we worked with on the legislature, and they were very happy to accommodate.
Thank you.
Richard?
I don't have access to my computer at the moment, so, two questions. Number one, I, these are clock hours, CEUs, rather than academic hours.
They could be college credits if a university wanted to create a course, so they could be college credits, they could be sketches, they could be district-provided professional development, all of that part has to come later. Now we just, now that we have the standards, we can develop the next steps and how those will be-
So like two academic credits could incorporate the nine, or rather, the hours required for military, meeting the military standards? Okay. And what's an example of one of the standards in the military section?
Let me find one for you. All the wrong documents. All the wrong documents. Understanding and promote college readiness by increasing awareness of military-funded options. Examples included ROTC, Reserve Officer Training Corps, and military academies.
Thank you, that makes it much more concrete for me. Thank you.
I just wanted to get some clarity. You mentioned on dates, you mentioned that you had to have something done by 2020, but yet they have five years to take the 150. So what has to be done by 2020?
So after February 6th, 2020, we can't renew or progress a school counselor's certificate or license. It really only impacts two of the credentials that are issued to school counselors in Michigan without these professional learning hours documented in some way through our system, which we have yet to establish. But the, the school counselors that are on a certificate right now-
And are going to expire like in March or something.
They all expire in June. They will have, they will have to get all of it done. So this first round of school counselors are going to perhaps have less time, which is a little unfortunate. That's why Leah said the faster we get approved programs out there and approved offerings, the better.
So they may only have like, less than two years.
Well, from now, so 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, four.
Oh, with the February 2020.
2020.
But if somebody comes in to get June 2020, they have to be relicensed.
Correct, they will need to have-
So they'll only have-
Two, three years to complete it, yes.
So for that group, the good news is, is we do allow them to begin renewing on January 1 of the year their certificate expires, so if they do it early, they wouldn't need them, but anybody after that would need them.
Okay, so that might be a crunch. What happens if they don't make it? They just lose their job?
Cannot renew their license, they would have to get a substitute permit until they were able to obtain their 50 hours and renew their certificate.
Their certificates won't expire until June of that year, so let's say February comes into play, and February 7th, they won't be able to renew, but their other credential, their old certificate should still be valid until June.
2020.
Right. So while someone can apply January 1 or February 6, the February 7th, they still should have a valid credential that will go until June 30th. So if we tell them, no, you can't have it because the law just was put in play, they'll have until June to try and collect the-
Will there be an effort made to ensure, to address those people?
Major communication plan.
And opportunities for people to, and that's a real flaw with the legislation, I think, that they didn't take that into consideration.
But I was just going to say, if we back it up, like Krista's talking about, on the backend, some of the fail safes, but the team is planning, again, they have it here before you, so we can get this approved, that's step one, offerings approved, and then a large communication push to say, you know, you do have a shorter timeline this time, and so here's how to move forward.
There are other programs that are available to you, and you need to have it done by the state.
And we can target our communication directly to, our online certification system allows us to see exactly who's going to expire, who's already expired.
But then some personal-
Yes, we can really target those individuals.
Communication, okay.
Yes. If we have updated contact information.
And then I, so the 50 hours are going to be replacing other training that they've had.
Or potentially adding on if the-
God, they want to do 200 hours.
If they wanted to do 200 hours.
Okay.
And many do go over.
Yep, yeah, they do. Any other questions?
If they were already doing 50 hours of these types of training, then it'll just, they're already good. You know, a lot of counselors are already keeping up their-
Yeah.
Development in this area. So it'll be a mix.
Okay.
Okay. We'll see you back in June.
Now, we'll go to the partnership district, and Alex will stay with us. And then we will be joined by, is it Diedrich or Dedrick?
Diedrich.
Diedrich. Diedrich Martin, the School Reform Officer and Director of the Partnership District Office, to give us a monthly update on the partnership district model, including the newest partnership districts identified at the end of March.
Good afternoon to the Board of Education and State Superintendent. Wanted to give you another update on where we are with our partnership districts. As you are aware, this is identified in our focus area of strategic partnership, the goals of the partnership district model. So we, we touch on several of the seven goals identified in the Top 10 and 10 Plan. Just a quick history, around this time last year, March 2017, we identified 10 school districts and 38 individual schools that were deemed as low-performing. They were the first round or Cohort 1 of the partnership model, and then again, in the fall of 2017, we did Cohort 2, which brought on seven more school districts in about 72 schools. What makes this third round a little bit different, I'm going to recap a little bit of information that you probably are already aware of, but just to bring it to your attention. One is the, the schools that were identified as CSI schools. These were identified basically under the ESA standards, and so we looked at low-performing schools or previously the bottom 5%. Schools that were with graduation rates of 67% or lower, and then additional schools, targeted schools that were previously identified, whether we called it priority or something else, that was kind of encompassed in this latest round. When a school is identified, typically we call them CSI, Comprehensive Support and Improvement. When a school is identified for CSI, they are in this model for at least a three-year period, regardless of what the upcoming academic results would be.
And, and like Diedrich said, the, the need to identify comprehensive support and improvement schools was a core requirement of ESA. So if we all remember back to our many, many presentations on ESA, this was a component that we had to have a way to do this in order to get our federal ESA plan approved. We also have state law on the books that requires the identification of a bottom 5%. So CSI schools meet those, those two requirements, and then we serve them, as Diedrich is going to talk more about, through the partnership model.
And then, so there were some changes to the accountability system when we looked at that, and so essentially, when we came to the new accountability standards, they kind of incorporated the scorecard, the top-to-bottom, the gap ranking, EL learners, and several things to bring it into this new system. Yeah. So I'm going to go off this. So what we did, what we did after we identified the various schools who were identified as a comprehensive school improvement model, then we started to reach out to all the superintendents. So myself, Superintendent Winston, we made individual calls to the individual districts, then we followed them up with emails, we conducted a series of webinars over the last several weeks, as well as follow-up meetings with several of the educational organizations. So ISD superintendents, RESA superintendents, met with some of the, many of the authorizers for our PSAs, met with almost all of the alphabet group, MISA, MASAA, so on and so forth. But we really tried to get the communication out about the new index components that was built on proficiency, growth, graduation rate, performance of English language learners, and school quality and testing participation. And so we talked to them about how this system was weighted, what it means for their schools and the index performance, as well as what, what does it mean to be a CSI or Comprehensive Support and Improvement school? So in doing that, we rolled out the list in March. This list brought around 21 new school districts and 24 new schools. There were some schools that were identified as CSI, Comprehensive Support, that are in a district that's not part of a partnership model. So in this example, you would have a school that's typically identified as an alternative education center. These schools may be there for performance and graduation, or it may be there just for a low graduation rate. So if that was the only school in a district, as such, they may not have been approached for a partnership model, but we still try to support that school as a comprehensive support school in need of some strategic intervention and support.
The reason for that is, the department had worked for two years with the U.S. Department of Education to attempt to get an alternate accountability system for alternative schools. At the end of the day, in our ESA plan, the U.S. Ed drew a hard line and said, no, everybody goes into one system, but you have flexibility in the intervention you offer. So we looked at, the partnership model in its entirety is not appropriate for a district for whom only their alternative school is flagged as, as low-performing. So we are offering supports to those schools at a school level, but not implementing a full partnership model. We are going to continue our advocacy with U.S. Ed around, we think that there are different ways to hold certain types of schools accountable, that one system doesn't fit adequately for all, but until then, our flexibility is on the so what, not on the identification.
So, with the completion of that third round, it brings the total amount of districts that we support up to 37, and the total amount of schools, up to 162 schools that our department will be supporting moving forward over the next several years. What we're doing moving forward is, we are in the process right now of scheduling several face-to-face meetings with newly identified districts, and this, this is an initial meeting, then as well as the final meeting on the day that they actually sign the partnership agreement. So in total, we anticipate having no less than 24 formal meetings in the next 90 days with additional follow-up meetings in between and as needed. So each of those districts have been given a liaison and a contact person should they need some help or questions in between April 2nd, the start of that 90-day window, and July 2nd. So they will be able to have a direct contact as they work through this process, but we will also go out and do a roadshow in various communities so that we can spend some face time and really help districts understand how to leverage the partnerships within their community, as well as the supports that we have to offer at MDE and ISD and RESA supports or, or authorizer support, so that we can try to turn the student achievement in the right direction and move them forward. Another thing that just was mentioned previously, we do have one district that is moving closer to us, considering next levels of accountability, that is Ben Harbor Schools. So I met with the board members about a week ago, actually, just kind of talking about what that may look like. We're still trying to flesh out details of what that may look like, but certainly, we're watching and staying in contact with Ben Harbor as we continue to move forward in terms of if and when next level of accountability should be necessary and what that would look like in terms of MDE response. So with that, I'll open up-
We're also working very closely with Treasury on that.
Yes.
Because Treasury has some responsibilities, but do look for us to take some action. But do look for us to take some action.
So with that, I'll open it up for questions. Yes.
One quick question, Eileen. The partnership agreements, are they online? Are they public?
Yeah, so we have partnership agreements that are online for all the districts that have previously signed. There are a few of them that we got back in the last couple of weeks that will be added to that list that you have online. And then each of the districts actually received a revised partnership. The new districts received a revised partnership template that went out this week so that they can start working towards their new agreements.
And that's on the Partnership District homepage?
Yes.
Okay. Eileen?
So this is sort of a complicated conversation question. ESA required that we identify these schools. My brain on ESA has long been maxed out and there's a sea of information that's in there, and I've no idea what actually ended up in it. And I bless everybody here who knows. I thank you for that repository. My issue is that if, when I look at the Partnership District goals, which was your first, or second slide, second slide, this is a process. This is not outcome for students. And I know that Benton Harbor, for example, is stuck on the process. What I don't know, with 12 ADC not having been resolved, is what will happen if the process does or doesn't work to change how the school functions and achievement still doesn't rise? And I don't know what the window is for making that happen. I know that there's a window for the planning part and for the implementation part, but I don't know if we get to the end of that and we still aren't seeing a change in how those kids are learning. What happens next?
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, from a pure ESA perspective, there is no- The federal law is quiet about what to do. So from a state perspective-
Yep. So from a state perspective, we kind of identified the checkpoints of 18 months and 36 months as the prime time to take action. However, it's flexible that we could do that prior to. So we meet with them basically every nine months to kind of track progress. If action, if student performance is not moving in a way as desired and kind of outlined in terms of the partnership plan, then there are several options that is not part of ESA, but part of what we, our state approach. And so that could be closure. That could be reconstitution. That could be the ISD taking or assuming control of the district or, not the district, but the schools within the district that are under the partnership model. So those are kind of the primary three. I'm sorry?
And CEO.
Yep. And the other one, thank you, is the CEO option, which at that point, myself as SRO Director, under Brian's direction, would be given the green light to appoint a person to go and oversee the day-to-day operations, i.e. effectively become the superintendent under our direction in that building. So 18 months is the primary checkpoint. We could move faster than that. But closure, reconstitution, appointment to ISD or CEO are kind of the four options that are on the table in terms of accountability.
And if I could just explore it a tiny bit more, because as a parent who's been in the school, it's a lot to ask a school to be able to perform well enough to turn children around in 18 months. And yet, if they haven't moved toward that quickly, you may not get any implementation at all. So I respect the complexity of this issue. Benton Harbor is stuck on implementing a change process. Am I right?
Yes.
What I read in the papers?
Yes.
There's not a commitment yet to a different way of doing both business and education? Is that fair to say?
That would be fair to say, or more or less. They're struggling with some organizational issues that's impacting their ability to focus on student achievement.
But I do want to say, the 18-month goal doesn't mean we expect, love to see it, student growth, particularly in local assessments driven by the local district putting those numbers in. But a lot of what you see at 18 months is more procedures. We're gonna do a curriculum audit. We're gonna make sure we have an aligned curriculum. We're gonna make sure we've decided we need a new math program. We're gonna have in that 18-month selected a new math program and professional development. So it's not like we expect the student's performance in 18 months to go from here to here. It's about getting the things aligned that will move student achievement in that first 18 months.
And that is, you would expect that within that 18 months, teachers would be retrained. In other words, that that would really be happening? And you'd start, there would be changes in the classroom?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what we've shared with a lot of districts to go along with Superintendent Winston's comments is that we'd like to see data at 18 months, and so we expect that. But also, process is also fair game. Because if they have some of these key process pieces taken care of with fidelity at 18 months, then we would expect to start seeing some growth. And you may not see, you may see growth, but you may not see it as much as you would like to at 18 months if there are some significant organizational issues.
I just, I don't want any child to be in a school that's allowed to go for another three years without huge changes. And every board member here shares that. It's worrisome that 12 ADC hasn't been reworked to provide things that we know have worked in other states for a turnaround. So, Richard?
This is a little off-script perhaps, but I'm curious, in the couple of years now that we've, the department has worked with underperforming schools, are there any themes or commonalities or things of that nature? I mean, I imagine, I know every school is unique, but I imagine there are some buckets of problems that are similar and might suggest preventative measures or things like that going forward. I'm just curious about what we've learned from this experience.
So I would say relationships between boards and superintendents and the leadership team is key to moving districts forward. Not to say that in every situation, we expect that to work out, because that's just not gonna happen. But, you know, where we do see good progress, you see boards and superintendents working on the same page, along with their teachers, unions, and the partners. It's not, you know, if this truly is working, you see the partners, the teachers, the parents, the community, the think tanks, you know, the nonprofits, all marching together in a positive direction. So where we see that, we see good things. Where we don't see it, we see some things. But it's not always one side or the other's fault. It could be a combination. I would say that's the biggest thing in the short time period.
Okay.
Secondly, you know, this is all about engaging partners. And we got to get districts in a handful of places to engage partners to a higher level.
Thank you.
Oh, Michelle and then Lupe.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, being in Detroit, living through many closures, I think it's irresponsible to rush to closure. I think it hurts the community as well as the kids. I don't think it's a wise option at all. I also am not fond of emergency managers. I've seen that not work out very well and sometimes create more debt and problems than they solve. And not being responsive to the community, unless, you know, they are somehow elected or involved in the board, the community supporting it, this decision. So I commend the work you're doing, but I think to have any results in 18 months and to expect results in 18 months is a setup for failure. And even in a three-year period, I see that there's often growth, but it might be slow. It might be slow to move. And what we're looking at are most predominantly test scores, even with the new plan we have. We do look at other factors, but what's driving it is test scores, which is linked to poverty by and large. There are some outliers you can throw in there, but by and large. So my concern for the community that I live in and for communities like it is that we give more time and not look at three years and then close a school. I think that that, the research supports that this is not a wise option. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Well, you know, piggyback on what Eileen said about no child should be in these environments. And then there's schools that might go that route that you talked about with the emergency, all of those different things. So that really troubles me, because I know some school districts in my side of the state are going through problems, like the superintendent said, with the board and the superintendent. So while the adults are having their problems, the students are suffering over here. So that bothers me a lot. So, okay. So those school districts that have been put in a plan and they haven't been able to move that needle that needs to be moved, so are you giving them additional time to remedy their problem? Or what happened?
I think a lot of it, you have to look at each school individually. So if you, when we look at their 18-month goals and their 36-month goals, if they are clearly demonstrating progress towards those goals, then I think you give them a little bit more time. Even if you get to the 36-month goal, so I'm just gonna throw out a number. Let's just say the goal was to increase by X percent. And they're not quite there, but you can show clearly that they have improved and they're moving towards that. Then I think that's something that we would consider. Do they need more time to accomplish this goal? Because A, we want to see that they put the best practice systems and strategies and structures in place to be successful. And I think where 18 months become critical is that if you can't start putting certain basic tenants in place with some consistency in 18 months, if you don't have a collaborative, strategic partnership between the superintendent and the Board of Education and the teachers group and all of these other partners, then districts continue to waste time by starting over with some new initiative or some new individual. So I think we have to look at each one on a case-by-case basis. But clearly, what I've indicated to, if all indicators are pointing that you're moving in the right direction, but you need a little bit more than 18 months or 36 months, then that's an open conversation. If all indicators are pointing that you're not moving forward with your outcome goals in terms of student achievement or your process goals, and neither are showing itself as evident, and these are goals that you had a hand in putting in place with our support, then I think we have to start looking at next levels of accountability if it's necessary.
So none of our districts have yet gotten to their 18-month mark. They're approaching, it'll be a year in June for the first set. May, essentially, 12 months. So like Diedrich said, we're gonna have to, Superintendent said all along, if they're substantially meeting their goals, that's one conversation. If they're substantially missing their goals, that's another. But we have to take it on a case-by-case basis. Anne?
So a couple of questions. One, are the districts that are currently, who were part of the first 10 districts, now are they, they're able to rewrite their goals at some point or review those?
If they want to modify plans, there's some flexibility in that. Now, what we caution them against is it's month 17, and all of a sudden, we want to move all of our benchmarks back so that, like, there is a time and a reason to do it. Now is a good time. Or when Dr. Vede came in in DPSCD and they changed things in their strategic plan, obviously, we want to update their partnership plan to reflect. But again, cautioning them against just a willy-nilly change. You know, the whole point of this is get a plan in place and stick to it. Implement it, work the plan. That being said, the plan doesn't have to be a taskmaster that, you know, if it's not useful, but-
You see something not working, we don't want to continue doing it.
Right. Like, let's not continue with something bad.
And my concern, I think we continue to bring this up. I think Tom has really driven this home, is helping these districts to think outside of the box. Because I know I was there with that first 10 districts that put their plans together. And it was really difficult to help them to think. And, you know, I've sat at this table, so I've talked to Brian, and I know where the sky, you know, I don't want to say the sky was the limit, but you had some room there. But it was very difficult for districts, for boards, for educators to think away from the testing, you know, and making sure we're putting together a plan that's gonna help us move the needle on testing, but really think bigger picture and partnership. So I really think that that is huge in helping these districts to continue to be able to move outside of the box in their thinking. And so we've gone from 10 districts with 38 schools to, what, 37 districts to 162 schools? How much time are we actually spending in these schools? Because I'm in a couple of these districts, maybe three. And so I see all the different players. I see all the different things at play. So I don't know if your staff get to really get into that with this many districts and it growing the way that it's growing. Because, you know, what you hear in the news, what you read in the newspaper, you hear change, there needs to be change. I think we started off with Tyler talking about, you know, when we have to think outside of the box, it's gonna be a lot of movement. And I'm almost kind of like hearing that movement may not be a good thing here because you gotta get, you have those 18 months or you have those three years that you gotta get it together and get it on the track and move it. But it, you know, as Michelle said, some of this out-of-the-box thinking is going to take some time, and it is gonna take some shifting. You know, there are gonna be some differences in leadership in April to get these districts to turn the corner. And it is gonna hurt because these, especially these smaller communities, where you're attached to these people. These are good people, but their thinking may not be outside of the box. So how do we address that? How are we getting into those schools? I mean, we're growing. This is a, you know, I'm happy that we're getting more schools in the partnership, but how are we making sure that the department is on the ground in those schools? How often, I want to know how often we're in these schools versus doing the face-to-face meetings, but really being able to see what's going on and not necessarily leaning on, you know, what's out there, what we're reading in the news or hearing out there in the atmosphere?
Before he answers, I just want to say a couple of things. One, we do, in particular, when we meet with the superintendents and the parents and the large group, do talk about, as part of that conversations, that, you know, we need to think out of the box. What's the problem? And what are some solutions to those problems? But one of the things I'm excited about is the districts themselves hold, I don't know what you call them, but there's meetings that they hold on a quarterly basis where just these districts get together and share what changes they've done and what's worked and what hasn't worked. And they've shared things that haven't worked, and they've shared, you know, programs that they're implementing that are working. So they're learning from each other. Now, I'll be candid, as we get up to 137 schools, we had a conversation in my office, I think it was this week, where we talked about how concerned we are about being able to get staff into the buildings enough times so that they're actually going through and doing walkthroughs and being helpful and pointing things out and not, you know, just doing paperwork.
Yeah. And let me back up. I mean, I guess I'm saying that hoping that it helps. Because I don't, you know, I don't know if we ever put, knew where this was going, you know, where this was going to go.
This is positive conversation.
But if we really want to help these schools to move process-wise, let alone, you know, moving the needle on, you know, the education outcomes, you know, we gotta keep a picture on that, our eye on that.
And I did want to mention, the board asked us to add some things to the contract, like student's role. And a couple others, and we've added those to the contract.
So Student Voice was added into the partnership agreement, and we gave some suggestions on how they might want to go about adding Student Voice. As Superintendent said, the networking meetings, we do do that quarterly. And talking into next year, we actually have two such meetings coming up. One to look at issues regarding talent management and retention. As Dr. Zilei had pointed out, there are some things that we're seeing across multiple districts. And one of it is stability at multiple levels, whether it's the leadership of the superintendent or the building administrator or the classroom teachers. That seemed to be an issue. So we have one focus on that because there's some concerns. We have another one that will be kind of a what to do if you are new to the partnership. We have also a network meeting coming up, looking at Blueprint, which is systemic thinking about how to turn some of these things around. So moving forward, we're trying to continue these networking meetings, but focus them in on things that we- in on things that we see or hear or notice across multiple schools that they struggle with. The other thing is, we recognize that being out there right now is, we're not in the ideal spot. So I think it was last Thursday, I met with state superintendent to talk about a plan to kinda maybe reshift the focus in my office a little bit so that we can try to provide a little bit better support and direction when necessary to our different schools.
And the last thing I'd like to add on that is, we have spent the last year identifying and onboarding. We should be done. That is our plan, is to be done. We are at capacity, we have our group, we've got our 37. This is what leading states do, they identify a set of districts and they work with them. They're not continually identifying and onboarding. So we've done it in three rounds because we've been transitioning from prior structures to now, but we should be done, get this last group on-boarded. It is a little bigger maybe than ideally we had, but still, we know we have all the districts who need this kind of support. Diedrich's reshaping his office, as Paula, Paula's right now working with her big new office, there's resources there. One of the things on the table is, are we adequately arranged to give the intensive support to partnership districts that we need to? So there may be resources that we need to borrow, shift, refocus. And then, yeah, continuing to use, on your idea about outside-the-box best practices, between the networking meetings and the department as a whole, our way of work and our 10 and 10 processes, that's on the whole department to come up with, what are the out-of-the-box things you might need? And then deliver them to partnership districts, not say you have to do it, but here, you're struggling with attendance, here's five innovative solutions that you might not know about. But that's on, we're also working outside of Diedrich's office to be ready with the what are the outside-the-box thinking? Because when you're, when you're a partnership district, you're actually not outside the box yet because you're mostly worried about getting your curriculum aligned, getting a staff hired, getting your board to not fire you if you're the superintendent. Like there's a, you're a little in the moment. And so we want to, we want to help with the whole power of the 10 and 10 in that. But it's a lot, it's a lot of work. Again, we would say in the last year, we've spent a lot of time onboarding and identifying and hiring and, you know, but we're ready to go.
I was trying to jump in.
Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I guess with regard to that, sometimes like staff hiring, like you mentioned, some of these schools, that's their, well, an impediment to that might be high-stakes testing, whereas if they read, if they thought outside the box, teachers might be more interested in coming to a school that is focused on community presentations and the six Cs and collaboration and creativity, that may be something that would attract hiring. And thinking outside the box and saying, look, we're not gonna be, you know, just focused on one particular test, but we're gonna, we're, we're asking MDE to think outside the box with us. And I know there are other districts that are looking at community presentations and other things instead of just high-stakes testing. So that's where I think, thinking outside the box, I mean, even in, within testing, I'm reading more and more about why do we have time limits or why are these strict time limits? I mean, if a child can get the right answer, but they take a little bit longer, what are you gonna penalize them and not allow them to finish those tests? So I just, I'm hoping that we really are, you know, parental involvement, parental satisfaction, and that's something that they want to focus on. I hope that MDE is open to, you know, trying to work with them potentially and see what it, you know, I mean, maybe it's an experiment. Maybe we say this is gonna be a big deal in turning the school around. They feel it is and we're persuaded that it is too.
Any other questions? Great, well, thank you. So next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of March 14, 2018.
I move. I move, I move. I move, supported both sets.
Support?
Support.
All right, moved and supported is their discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of the closed session of March 14, 2018.
Motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Report of the co-presidents. Richard?
I'm not quite sure how to say this tactfully. There has been passionate call for improvement in Michigan education. As there has been every year, the focus of some of this has been the fall of Michigan's NAEP scores with respect to other states in the last 10, 15 years. Now, there are some reasons for that which never get mentioned. One is that during the 10 years that Michigan fell behind, our neighboring states raised their school entry date from December 1st, from December 1st to September 1st. So our kids were beginning school about 5% chronologically behind and whatever developmental lag that translates into. During that decade, Michigan was the only state to lose population. And it's generally families following jobs that account for that loss of population. And so the loss of population tend to be students that tend to be academically, perform academically better than those left behind. And I am eager to talk about ways to improve Michigan education, but unless those proposing solutions can honestly identify some of the sources, then they are not in a position to propose solutions. If they don't know why our statistics, how our statistics came to be what they are, then they are in no position to offer solutions as to how to correct the problem. If you don't know a car is, a problem is caused by wheels out of line, then you're not in a position to propose spending more on the engine. So I think, and if nothing else, at least let's, let's people know who are discussing improvements for Michigan's education, that board members are paying close attention to the proposals and the analyses that are being put forth. Thank you.
I will forego my report for this month and turn it over to the superintendent.
Just real quickly, you know, we've been working with all the various business and education and think tanks who have put out education plans, because one of the things, will never be a top 10 state if we move in 20 different directions. So we've really been trying to work with the groups and authors of these to come up with three to five or whatever the magic number of things that we can all work together to move Michigan forward. And I, when are we gonna have that finalized?
We should have, we have the actions finalized, we don't have the means by which we are communicating those actions.
We'll have a report from the board soon. Okay. And then, of course, I've been busy on the partnership model as we heard and working with Ted, so that's kind of been what's taking up my time. Thanks, let him go for them.
Okay. Report of the Michigan Teacher of the Year.
Luke Kupas. Luke is a, the 2017, 2018 Michigan Teacher of the Year, and he will provide a report. Luke is a math teacher at East Kentwood High School and Kentwood Public Schools, which is in the greater Grand Rapids area.
Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to take just a short amount of your time today to talk a little bit about a conference that I attended, March 22nd. Eileen was there, I think Dr. Zee was there as well. This was the Bridge Magazine 2018 Michigan Prosperity Solutions Summit, which, there's sort of an interesting premise behind the whole idea of Bridge and Bridge Magazine. Their big claim is that they are a fact-based, nonpartisan journalist, which I can certainly appreciate. I know in education, a lot of times we heavily lean on anecdotes, on stories that we know of certain individuals that are close to us. But I'm also a mathematics teacher and a statistics teacher, and I do appreciate data and what the data suggests. So they started the summit with presenting some data, and I'm gonna share some of that with you, and that's just to sort of set the stage or just to put it out on the table. But this was a solution summit, not a complaining summit, I think is what they said. And so I do, I promise you that I have a proposed solution at the end of the discussion of the data. So this one I've brought to the board in various forms, but this is the idea that if, if I know the socioeconomic status of a school district or of a school, then statistically I can make a pretty darn good prediction about the academic performance of the, of the school. So you see your richest districts in the top right there and your poorest districts in the bottom left. And to me, this is, this is something that is, this is a problem. One of the other things that they brought to attention, which I thought was really interesting, is that we've been declining, not just for certain subgroups, but for all subgroups. And so this is the grade four reading from 2003 to 2015, and by any measure of subgroups that you see up there, you can, you can see that we're moving in the wrong direction. So whether they're African-American, Latino, white, low-income, high-income, all of those numbers are currently moving in the, in the wrong direction. The next one here is about literacy, and you know, you've probably seen this in the, in the news, that the decline in the third grade reading. I do think that we, we have put some investments in recently that are going to show some benefits, and they're just not there yet because they're, they're investments that take time. I know last month at the Board of Ed meeting, we had a group come here and talk about some of the stuff that they're doing for literacy, and it's amazing work, and I think that there are going to be huge benefits from that. And so this one, I think time, time will tell. The next two are about some of the big inequities when it comes to higher-income districts versus lower-income districts. This particular slide is about average teacher salary, and you can see that there is quite a big difference in the average teacher salary from higher-income districts to lower-income districts. And, you know, you hear Diedrich talking about the difficulty in retaining teachers in some of these partnership schools, and certainly this, this has something to do with it when it comes to teacher salary. One of the other inequities that exists between the highest and lowest poverty districts is in the funding, as far as equitable funding. And I do think that this is actually on its way to improving as well. But still something that we certainly should consider is, you know, how we allocate funding for some of the poorest districts in our state. Okay, so I promised that there would be some solutions discussed here. And one of the cool things about this summit was that they brought in educators from some of the highest-performing states, including Massachusetts and Tennessee. And I want to talk a little bit about some of the ideas that they're using in Tennessee to improve their student academic achievement. And they are, Tennessee is fast-rising right now to become the next Massachusetts, like the next state that we talk about for the next 10 years and try and, and try and model. So here's one of the things that they did in Tennessee. In 2013, they started a teacher-leader network with just a couple of school districts in 2013. In the last five years, that network has grown to include now 146 different school districts within Tennessee. This teacher-leader network, and within this teacher-leader network, they are, they are training teachers to become coaches, to help support their colleagues, they are training teachers to become mentors for new teachers, and they are training teachers to lead professional development within their, within their school districts. And not only are they training them and providing them these, these additional skills, but there is funding that goes along with that. So they are being compensated for some of these leadership roles that these teachers are taking on. And they've shown huge, huge academic achievement in, with their, with their students in this model. And as Tyler talked about earlier today, this is something that we're starting to think about in the Marshall Plan, in what he was calling the Innovative Educator Corps, the idea of the master teacher in the state of Michigan with compensation associated with it. And so that is really encouraging to me, that whole idea, that part of the Marshall Plan, I think could have huge impact on student achievement when we look at the state as a whole. So I've got some data here, and this, this data here is talking about essentially like how do teachers feel about, about their jobs? And I think this is an interesting way to like try and measure success in a school, is like what do the, how do the teachers feel about the work that they're doing? And I will bet that the higher you see these numbers here and how teachers feel about what they're doing in their jobs, you will see that directly paired with student achievement. And so I think this is an interesting way to sort of go about thinking about it and to collect data. So this whole idea of teacher leadership, and this certainly isn't the first time you've heard me talk about this, this is sort of a general theme throughout the year. I'm gonna give you the three big advantages that I see to using teacher leadership as a, as a high-leverage tool, right? Obviously, it's gonna take a lot of concerted efforts to increase achievement, but I think that teacher leadership is one that we can have a, that can have a big impact on student achievement. And here's why, three reasons. Number one, if you train teachers to be leaders, then those leaders are going to improve the overall instruction of not only their own classroom, but of their colleagues. They're gonna be coaching, they're gonna be mentoring, they're gonna be doing the professional development, that's gonna improve the overall quality of the entire profession. Number two, when teachers are involved in the decision-making process and the planning within a school, there is much more buy-in. A lot of times, there are better decisions that are made because you have more parties that are involved or invested in the, in the results, and the buy-in. And the buy-in is critical to any successful movement with, within education. And then the third advantage, I think, is about this idea of retaining talent. You know, I have a good handful of friends who used to be teachers who are no longer teachers because they didn't have an opportunity to continue to grow themselves as leaders, and they found other ways to do that in, in business or in consulting. And so I think if we create opportunities for teachers to become teacher leaders, that those teachers are gonna be more likely to be in the classroom. And I've certainly been given some of those opportunities in my district, in Kentwood, and that's why I'm very happy to continue to work in Kentwood. And I will be working at East Kentwood High School next year. And so how can we create these opportunities for other teacher leaders within the state? So teacher, so bottom line here is, I think that teacher leadership is a, is a high-leverage tool that we can use to improve student achievement, and I think that Tennessee is evidence to suggest that a concerted effort over several years has, has actually led to, to real results there. And we should consider how we can create similar programs within our state of Michigan.
Thank you. Next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. Marty Ackley, Director of Public and Government Affairs, will provide an update on state and federal legislative issues. And then Eileen, if there's any reports from the State Board of Ed, and then Nick A. Lupe, Masby Reports. So let's start with Marty.
Thank you. The State Board's Legislative Committee met on April 29th. There were a few things that were discussed. One was a package of bills that is in the House. It's on, it passed out of the House Education Reform Committee and is on the floor now. It's a teacher preparation package, and there are several bills in this, including one that is a warranty education program. Most of these are aimed, not aimed, geared at improving teacher prep institutions, things that they can do to improve the quality of teachers. So one bill is an education warranty program where the university program would basically have a warranty on the teachers that come out of that school. Another one is to provide stipends to teachers who supervise student teachers. One would provide for 400 hours of classroom or practical experience in addition to student teaching. Another bill would be an Innovative Education Corps, Educator Corps program. Another bill would require additional reading education credits. Another is a student teaching program to provide that student teaching or clinical experience be in diverse circumstances. And then another one would be embedding topics into coursework. So that was discussed a little bit in the, in the committee. Another thing was discussed was the Senate has passed, the Senate Subcommittee on K-12 has passed out its, its budget. The House version, there's a meeting this afternoon by the House Subcommittee on Approves to pass out its version, we don't know what's in there yet. The Senate version did not include all of the recommendations of the governor. The governor proposed an increase in the foundation allowance between $120 and $240 per pupil. The Senate was lower than that, the Senate was between $115 and $230. There's also, the governor also proposed a lower amount of funding for cyber schools, cyber charter schools, and also for shared time programs. The Senate did not accept those recommendations and continue, excuse me, the funding as it is. The Senate also included some language, and they changed the funding mechanism for partnership districts. And what it does is it takes money and puts it in a separate pot for foundation allowance for- for partnership districts. And for the districts to to receive that, they have to do they have to do certain things. One of them included in that language was some language that we're trying to work with the Senate on regarding what happens if a school if a partnership district has has a school that needs to reconstitute itself, basically sets up a charter model. And so there are some issues with that that we have that we are working with the Senate on currently. We are doing we are having meetings with the with the legislators to discuss those that change. Like I said, the House is doing its budget today, so we'll know more about what is what is in their package. So that and then I was asked also to bring up an issue that was will add $4 million, $4.1 million to our to the budget somewhere. There was a tentative settlement agreement on a lawsuit that was brought to light yesterday that would require the state to pony up $4.1 million to help screening for children in the city of Flint to diagnose any neurological issues based on the the water issue there. And so we'll have to come up with with that. We will the settlement agreement also says if the if the appropriation is not made by the legislature, then the then the agreement is not the agreement is void. So we'll be working with the legislature to try to get that $4.1 million appropriated. So, yeah.
Thank you, Marty. I was concerned about the lawsuit because some of the reports indicated that there's a second stage coming, and Brian, you probably have more knowledge about that than I do.
I knew about the first stage, and we had signed off, depending on legislative support. That's all I'm aware of.
That was our main involvement. The second stage is a broader broader case that's outside of.
Is it medical?
Services. It's outside of the water crisis.
Okay.
Right.
Well, the department is rather lean, and so any efforts to take our good staff and use them someplace else means we either need more money for more good staff, or we're going to be struggling. So the only other thing that I wanted to add is not strictly legislative, it's the fact that the 2017 fourth and eighth grade math and reading national assessment governing board results we've reduced today released today for the NAP. Thank you. And I understand, I haven't seen them myself, but I understand that they're flat with some movement in the upper 25% of students, which supports pretty much what Lupe was saying.
I had some questions.
Yeah. Questions.
So when you were going through those packages in the Senate, I you threw out some terms, which I didn't quite understand.
It's a House package.
House package, I'm sorry. So there's a warranty program or some so could you explain that?
Sure, I can I can read right from my analysis. A warranty education program would have to be offered to individuals who satisfy the following criteria. One, he or she completed a teacher prep program at a teacher prep institution in Michigan. He or she is employed to teach at any grade K-12 operated by a school district, ISD, PSA, or not public school, not later than two years after first receiving a teaching certificate issued by the state superintendent. His or her employer determines that he or she lacks the skills to effectively teach students based on local evaluation tool and an individual development plan that identifies specific areas of instructional development that are most effectively addressed by further teacher prep institutions. A person who meets the requirement would be able to enroll in a warranty education program at any teacher prep institution approved by the superintendent. A teacher who does not meet the requirements would not be able to enroll. The program would have to be paid for by the teacher prep institution that graduated the prospective enrollee. So basically, if if I go through University A or College A to get my teacher education, I go into the classroom at a K-12 school somewhere, I don't I'm not effective, I'm not doing what I need to do. Based on local evaluation tool and an individual development plan by the school district and the teacher, then that teacher can go back and get reeducated or get some sort of some some other additional professional development paid for by the original university. So it's a warranty that the original university or teacher prep program is giving a warranty that that the teachers that we produce are effective. And if they're not effective, then they get they get to go back and get professional development or whatever they need to to get a master's degree or whatever.
So I you did you want to? Okay, so I'm just seeing like the implications. So based on this evaluation tool, so it's another teacher evaluation on top of the teacher evaluation.
I'm guessing it's the same one.
So based on that.
Whatever they whatever they whatever that district uses.
Which is invalid, according to the American Statistical Association. So so it would create an incentive to go where your test scores will probably be better than in a a district that might be really desperate for teachers. So it'd be a greater disincentive to go to a school district where it's high poverty is what I.
Also includes an individual development plan, too. So if a teacher has a development plan with the district and they don't seem to.
Yeah, but those are imposed, my understanding from the administration. So I just, yeah, I'm just I'm not I'm just it's not you. It just seems crazy.
Michelle, if there was student growth being shown, don't you think schools would be fair and show that?
No, no, no. I think that there is abuse of power. I think that there there it's unchecked, you can't grieve it because it's a prohibited subject of bargaining. So if you've got some administrator who's going to be unfair, then you really have no redress, you have no. So so, yeah, some people will be fair, yeah, but there's just it's such a potential for abuse that, you know, somebody files a grievance against somebody sexually harassed, and they make a complaint about something. You know what I mean? So it I think.
But bear in mind that all this is is a ticket to go back to school, to make sure that you can access better training, which gives you an opportunity, you're not trapped, to come back to the same district. So it's an effort to allow a teacher who doesn't succeed in a school district to go back and get better training.
Okay, so, yeah.
And it's also involved with an education plan for the teacher, development plan for the teacher as they come out, a new teacher making sure that they have mentoring and the supports that they would need in the classroom. The system may very well fail that teacher. The system is failing huge amounts of new teachers who drop out already in the first five years.
Right, and this does not help them to stay. It does not do anything to me.
Do you think that district that you think that providers I what I'm hoping for is that the ed schools will be taking a really close look at all of the schools that their teachers may be teaching and modify.
Well, they won't they won't send them to the school districts where they're likely to have poor test scores, and those test scores are invalid according to the American Statistical Association. And yet, we keep getting legislation that relies on these test scores, and we get organizations who use these test scores to destroy public education. And I I just I just I understand in when you say, you know, the poor kids, they have these terrible teachers, the whole assessment is flawed, and that is not recognized. The teachers are doing incredible jobs, and I think these assessment tools are just do so much more harm than good, and they are what's driving teachers out. That the testing of the kids and these flawed assessments with no redress and and which and puts all this, oh, it's all the teacher that and let's let's ignore poverty and let's ignore the larger the societal problems, and let's just, you know, pay teachers less and less and tell them they're overpaid. It's it does this whole system and these this people that are passing this types of or proposing these types of legislations, don't tell me they care about those kids. Because if they did, they would not they would look at what they're doing, they would look at the data, they would look at the American Statistical Association. They just want, you know, they they want to privatize it all, and I'm just sick of it. I'm just sick of it.
So I I have a question. So these alternative certification routes now, are they going to be held to the same standard? Are they going to have to pay to send people to a college of education when their alternative certification isn't successful?
That's a good question. I don't I don't believe so, but if they if they don't.
Forward that on. That's what I was looking for, is is there any feedback that would be useful for the legislature at this point?
Yeah, because they don't come through a traditional teacher prep program.
So so they there's no recourse for them?
Well, the warranty is from the institution that that trains them, so.
They don't get trained by an institution, right? So, yeah.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. That's why I was looking for a path to for Marty to ask some questions or do some further research.
And we'll get we'll get the answers to that.
So I my concern with this is that I think we're going to our teacher preparation institutions, first of all, we're making assumptions that they don't, you know, they don't they don't I don't know if they don't care, or they're just passing people along, which I I know, working from Wayne State, and Michelle knows, is absolutely not true. But my they're already struggling because their enrollment's about 50% of what it used to be. So how many teacher prep institutions are going to drive right out of the business? Because now they're going to not only have to educate these these students, but then two years later, they might be paying to educate them somewhere else. So that's concern number one for me. The second concern I have is with 5598. I haven't read the actual bill, but this is requiring continuing education for instructors and teacher prep programs. I mean, these are PhDs who who write journal peer-reviewed journal articles. What kind of continuing education are we going to set up that isn't a complete joke for these these instructors? It just seems to me like this is, I mean, talk about being out of your lane here. This is just not this doesn't even seem rational to me. So I I just those are my concerns that we're going to drive people right out of. I mean, we've already done a really good job of doing that so far, but we're just going to keep going.
All right, thank you.
So where are these bills right now?
They're on the House floor, waiting to get voted up. Yeah, they they.
They went to the Senate?
Yes, they came out of the committee. Now they're on the floor of the House for consideration.
Budget.
They won't listen.
Any other questions?
No, no, no.
NASB.
Correct. Right. I'm looking at Pam because.
No, I didn't know if you were asking any other questions on those particular bills or in general on legislation.
We can move forward.
You know, and I probably should just I better mention, in case you haven't heard, the bottled water is ending or was announced that it would be end in the city of Flint. I think that I brought to you all and talked about it quite a bit here, we passed a statement or wrote a statement around lead testing. And so we finished three rounds of testing in the city of Flint, Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, finished three rounds of testing at three weeks per round of testing. We did find lead in the schools while there were multiple samples taken in each schools, but there are multiple schools that still have lead in those buildings. So I know that when we first talked about the how much was it, $4 million that we started? Okay, $4 million in the replacement of fixtures, and so we thought that that would eliminate the lead. It hasn't. From my perspective, from a public health perspective, as well as this board who really looks at the implications of lead's impact on the learning outcomes of our children, I think that we have a lot more to do as it relates to eliminating lead exposures, particularly in water, because when we have lead in in water and fixtures that come in contact with with water, the exposure is far more greater than it is elsewhere. So I think that there's a lot more work to do around that issue. And unfortunately, Flint is still left with exposures that I think that we still owe those residents the that our work, our efforts, our resources, to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to eliminate that, especially for our schools. So we will continue to have meetings around that. The schoolchildren in Flint, at least the Flint community schools, will still have access to water because what is called the Coalition provided some bottled water or funding to purchase bottled water until the end of the school year. I still need to figure out what some of the other schools, the non-Flinck community schools are doing. But again, there's still a lot of work to be done, and I think that that this body should be concerned with that population in particular, as well as the parents, and making sure that parents can rest assured that when their children go to the school, that at least they are they are safe and that the environment isn't further exposing them to lead or any other hazards. So we'll continue those discussions, and then I'll talk to you all about any next steps that we may need to do here.
Any other questions on legislation?
All right, NASB.
I have not data referred to Lupe.
Okay, well, thank you. We have NASB awards that will be that we are going to be nominating for today, hopefully, and and submit, I you know, I don't see the deadline here. Let me see. Yep, May the 25th. So, wow, we are really. Okay, so we're going to now there's three, four awards, actually, that we can nominate individuals, SBE members, State Board of Education members, and then there's one that will be awarded to a friend of education, somebody that has worked in the field but is not from the field. So each year, the National Association of State Boards of Education recognizes distinguished leaders for their contributions to improving education for all children. Two awards given to individuals, the Policy Leader of the Year Award or Friend of Education Award. Up to three distinguished service awards are given to state board members from across the country for their outstanding contributions to education. The Board of Directors may also designate a David Casilco. Casilco, did I get that right? Got it in syllables. A Casilco Award winner, an individual who has demonstrated unwavering commitment to NASB values and service of state boards of education. Winners will be nationally recognized at NASB's National Conference in this in Denver on October 17 through the 20th, 2018. So I'm going to open the floor for nominations for the Policy Leader of the Year Award, and this award provides an opportunity to recognize the contributions to an education to education made by national or state policymakers and education leaders. NASB members may nominate individuals other than members of the State Boards of Education who has specifically had an impact on education policy and the education and the education system, either in their role as national policymakers and administrate as administrators and or as citizens who have contributed to the improvement of education through venues such as national commissions, test forces, or other significant boards and organizations. Yes, it's open for nominations.
Well, I wanted to nominate Brian Whiston for that award. I think the work, in particular, with getting our USAP plan approved through our legislature and through the with the feds and our innovative approach, which is a leader, we think is, you know, provides leadership for the country and other states, and having a more holistic way of approaching education and how we assess it, I think took great skill and some courage to do that. And that, along with all the work developing, bringing in so many different partners and stakeholders and developing the top 10 and 10, was was also showed great leadership, and pulling that together was no small thing. So and then the partnership models, which I also think is in in our state and in the getting that. getting that agreement of so many different parties to, to take that approach and to use that approach, I just thought really shows your skills and leadership, and it, and I think it's, it's something that it should be nationally recognized and, and is, shows leadership among all the other states, and that, and that was really because of you, Brian. I mean, there's a lot of other people, but it has a lot to do with you.
I support. I want to be the one to support.
Or the team and our partner.
Yes. Okay. All right, so Brian, Superintendent Brian Whiston has been nominated for the Policy Leader of the Year Award. The next award is the Friend of Education Award, and this award provides an opportunity to recognize citizens whose primary work may be outside the realm of education policy and education system, for those contributions to education are significant and enduring. NASB members may nominate a person or organization, for example, individuals or organizations from the fields of business, the arts, entertainment, and sports, whose past or current efforts on behalf of education are deemed to be outstanding benefits to the students in our nation's schools, to the people who work in the field of education, and to the quality of American education overall. So this is an individual that is in another field other than education, but is contributing to the education of our students. Do you want to nominate that same person?
I can, yeah.
What was the name of the person?
Earl Kuratin?
Can you tell us a little, please?
Oh, my goodness, okay, let me dig out. Go, go to something else and I'll, and I'll be able to.
Okay, and then the next one is a Distinguished Service Award. This award provides an opportunity, an opportunity to recognize the outstanding contributions to education made by a state board of education member from across the country. NASB members may nominate for, for national recognition, current or recently retired board members with efforts on behalf of education or deemed to be outstanding benefit to the quality of American education and the shaping of its future. Okay, so we don't have, we don't have to nominate a person in each one, it would be good to, but we don't have to, but at least we have one nomination, one concrete nomination. I don't know about the next one.
So Earl.
Go ahead.
So Earl is with the Detroit Pistons, and he's their community ambassador. He formerly played 12 years, NBA veteran, but he, through his work with the Detroit Pistons, he leads their community programs, and he makes impact through the metro Detroit education system, reading events with Detroit Elementary School, providing advice to high school athletes, working on the library renovation in Flint, and so does quite a bit with the schools in, in Michigan. Several other stuff, working with the Detroit Health Department, work glasses, the.
This, that's the one I had heard about.
Mm-hmm, yep, yep, yep. Providing, uh, reading glasses to students, so I can get more. Would love to nominate him again. So I move that, that Earl Kuratin be nominated as the Friend of Education Award 2018.
Support.
Are we limited to one, or could we do a person and an organization?
Well, you know, the chances of us getting one would become less, but you want to.
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be this year, but the one that came to mind for me would be the League of Women Voters, either in Michigan or Oakland County. They think they've done a lot to really educate people about education issues in the state. They've been, for years, they've been doing this, and I think it's, you know, it's pretty admirable that they've taken on the issue.
Which organization?
Legal Women Voters.
Yes, 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 yes.
But, you know, if we want to do that next year, that's fine.
So what's the award? We don't have someone in. Can they fit in there or no?
No, it's for a state board event.
The Distinguished Service Award.
Yeah.
And then the other one, too, the, the one I couldn't pronounce so well.
Oh.
Casilco, yeah.
Yeah, what is that one?
That one is.
The criteria?
Individual who has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to NASB values and service of state boards of education.
As service to state.
Yeah, I don't think it would fit that one. So anyway, that's just an idea.
Yes, and, and these ones have to be board members?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then we have two nominations, so I will work with Marilyn and also you, and you will work with Marilyn, okay?
Yeah.
And I'm sure that she'll make sure that we meet the timeline. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There is no consent agenda today. So, moving on to comments by the State Board of Education members.
I just want to recognize that it's National Pay Equity Day, and women are still, oh, in the aggregate, paid about 80% of men, so they would have to, to earn what men earned in 2017, they would have to work until today. Again, that's in the aggregate, and a lot of that has to do with women being concentrated in lower-wage jobs, and I would like to say, of teaching is one of those, they're very important work, but underpaid jobs. And so, just, work for change, I guess. Hopefully we can recognize it and maybe help educate our girls and young, young men and women to overcome it.
So I, I will not be able to be at the meeting next month, because it is an election day, and so I will be doing election stuff. This will be the first meeting, I believe, in 12 years that I have missed, so. Just happens to fall on a second Tuesday after the first Monday of an election month. However, I did send some materials to Marilyn for the agenda planning session. I just wanted to mention, I met with the Henry Ford a couple weeks ago, and they are bringing a national competition for K-12 students for entrepreneurship and innovation. And as part of this, they had a Michigan competition last month, I believe, and the national competition will be in June, and so I would love for them to be able to come and give a presentation, because they, they may possibly, fingers crossed, be the home of this for the next few years. So that would be really exciting for students, not only in Michigan, but actually it's globally. It's, it's not even the United States, it's across the world. So, so that will be discussed at Agenda Planning Session.
Okay, I, I want to, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you for all the well wishes and cards and everything. I, as I think all of you, or most of you know, that the day of the last board meeting, I was on an operating table for five and a half hours getting a quadruple bypass after a heart attack four days earlier, so. I am recovering well at home and hope to be joining you guys, you all, next month, so I want to thank you.
Yeah, well.
Thank you. Don't send any more records for us, Tom. Get better.
Okay, I, I want to do two things. One, say something, but I, I want to go to number 10 for the, the report of the Michigan Teacher of the Year, but not, not him, but the, the Michigan Teacher of the Year's Selection Committee, because I have not been notified if I'm going to be on it or not, and so I want to say to you guys that I have been serving in that committee for three years, and if there's a highlight in my involvement with this board is the Michigan Selection Committee. And so I, I want to continue serving in that capacity. I don't know if, who has been selected, Michelle? And if Michelle has been selected, if there's another place on, on the panel where two board members can be part of the group. I, I strongly believe that diversity is very important. I strongly believe that experience on the committee and also experience in the K-12 realm are two other very important ingredients that I will bring to the table. And, and I, you know, I, my philosophy is looking at the half-full glass, and so you know how I feel about highlighting those positive things that are done in the classroom, and when I hear all these reports about our educational, even what you reported about we being even below the line, that, that really bothers me, because I know when I serve at this committee, all the outstanding, I think you said something about the, the things that teachers do, all the outstanding work that the teachers are doing out there. If, if we weren't doing something positive, there wouldn't be all these doctors that are coming out and all these other, many, many different professions. So I, when, when they formulate all this data, I'm sure that they're putting all kinds of students in the pot and making a report, but if they would put all the good things that are happening, I know we would be way up there somewhere, because Michigan is educating students. We are, and so when I hear these reports, I don't want to hear them, because I know that the teachers work hard every single day. So those are the kind of things that the Teacher of the Year, being in that panel, bring to my brain and, and refresh my brain as to all the great things that I feel I did in the classroom for as long as I did. So I don't know who to ask, if there's another place on the panel that I can participate in, because I would like to continue being part of that group. So I guess I'm asking you, Superintendent Whiston.
I can also talk to the coordinator for the MTO program.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to have, have you work, teach me.
Okay, sounds good.
Richard?
This is, we're on comments by state board members?
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that the last month, I attended the 20th anniversary gala of the Dearborn Academy in Dearborn, charter school that's been around for two decades, a real model of multiculturalism. Their school newsletter goes out in English, Spanish, and Arabic. Quarter of their students are, quarter of their students are Hispanic, a quarter are black, about 40% are Arab cultural background, so they are a real mixing bowl of Americans, and a wonderful example of educational choice in, in the Detroit metropolitan area. So I wanted to, congratulations to Mr. Wassim and the whole team at Dearborn Academy.
Anyone else?
I guess I can say to try to one-up, I, I attended my first, first robotics competition. I think it was a couple of weeks ago.
Very good.
I know there was one last week in Grand Rapids, and I think there's one coming up in Saginaw Valley, but it was so exciting to see that, so it was fun. My dad made me go, but. And I just felt at home amongst all the robots and nerds and idiots. So it was good, it was fun.
Great.
And, and, and just to, at the end, I, you know, I know you all received a lot of emails asking me about this and that, letters, I get all kinds of things, and I wish I could respond to each and every one of them, but I just don't have the time to. But this really caught my eye, because they sent it to me last week, and it's concerning testing, and I know we have to test. I, I understand that we had to have a, a measurement. They're here, and where did they get over here? But it seems to, what everybody's telling me is that it's too much, because not only there's requirements from the state, federal level, but there's requirements in the district level. And then not only are there requirements in the district level, they have to prepare for the test, and so there's the prep and then the test, and, and so the teachers are telling me, we're spending a lot of time. So this particular email talked about having to start testing today. Today, no, yesterday, Monday, and just after spring break. So the question was, can there be waivers, can there be leeway so the testing doesn't occur just after spring break? Can they start on Monday? Or this, written in stone that nobody can change the, the window? So, you know, I want to respond to this particular teacher or send it to you. I, I'm sorry?
We'll get your response.
Yes, okay, because it would be good. I, I want them all to love what we say that they have to do, but also give them a leeway so they don't have to test right after spring break. So thank you so much for listening.
Okay, future meeting dates, next meeting is Tuesday, May 8th, which is also Election Day, the regular meeting, and then we have a retreat on Tuesday, May 22nd, that will take place at the James B. Henry Center for Executive Development at Michigan State University, and then our regular meetings following that will be June 12th and August 14th. No meeting in July. If there are any specific items the board would like to include on future meeting agendas, please let us know, and we'll be working in the next few weeks to finalize the agenda for next month's meeting. With that, we are, do I need a motion to adjourn?
Nope.